Good evening and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting, Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Mayor Burr.
Here.
Mrs. Monroe.
Here.
Ms. Wyatt. Mr. Shoep.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Messer.
Here.
And a motion to excuse Councilmember Wyatt. This is a...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right. Please stand for a color guard.
Forward. Art. Out. Breathe and out.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Haring. Colors. Forward. Art.
Good and gracious God, thank you for bringing us here today, bestowed with your authority here in Lebanon, Ohio. Please send down your grace, send down your power of your healing on all those dealing with illness, give your energy, your inspiration to all the hands that are dealing with the virus going through the United States and the rest of the world. Pray especially for our council member who is missing tonight due to medical issue. As we recognize our wrestlers here from Lebanon, help us to know that everything that we do, all of our success, all of our gifts, come from you and are supposed to be for your glory. Help us to take the talents that were given and increase them to bring about your kingdom here on earth. As we recognize our sheriff here, help us to cultivate in ourselves and in our communities a holy obedience to the natural law, the natural rules that you have put forth in front of us so that we may live in better community and be a reflection of the divine love you give to all of us. Inspire us here on council that we may do your will, and in your holy name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Welcome, everyone. All right. First, let's take a look at consideration of work session meeting minutes, February 19th, 2020, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews.
Here.
Mr. Shoep.
Here. Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
And consideration of regular meeting minutes, February 25th, 2020, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Shoep.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
All right. Sheriff Sims, it's always great to have you here.
Thank you very much. Always good to be here. Appreciate coming around and at least share a few things, see everybody, and I know we see each other throughout the year at different events and so forth.
Yes.
But it's been my pleasure. This is my 12th year, which has kind of flown by, quite honestly, so I thought when I saw the crowd, I thought they were here to see me, but I guess they're expecting me.
We're new here, we're recognized.
You appreciate that. But I'll just take a couple minutes to share a few things. You have our end of the year report that I usually pass out, and as you know, carries the data, the statistics that we collect for the services that we provide throughout the year. There was a couple of things that I wanted to mention that kind of stand out beyond our normal services, and two things that you're well aware of our situation with our jail sheriff's office, which is currently under construction. They quietly say they are a little ahead of schedule because of the mild winter, but we are still looking summer of next year. If you've been by there, you see walls up. We certainly appreciate the relationship with the city of Lebanon because I know they, you know, had some involvement in that whole project and the roads being moved and so on and so forth, so it moved along pretty quickly. We certainly appreciate that, and I think someday, we talked earlier, someday it'll be a very valuable office and facility for us all. So I wanted to mention a couple of things. In addition to that construction, there's two other projects that impact our office in the future. One is Deerfield Township. As you know, we have a contract to provide law enforcement services there, 28 sworn people that work out of that post, and they are in the stages of planning rebuilding of or building of a new administration office. We don't have a good timeline on that. We had a brief conversation even recently about that, but that will also involve moving our post over there with them in the future, so we'll see some growth there. South Lebanon, where you probably are familiar with, we have a post that works out of the village of South Lebanon and the township, and they have renovated the old school. If you haven't been down there, it really is a really, really nice facility for the village offices that move there, and the second floor of that will be renovated in the near future so that our deputy sheriff's post will be able to move up there and gain some additional space that they need. And then the last thing, a couple of things I'll mention, there, I get around the county a lot, and I do enjoy it. I enjoy talking to people and representing our office, and I seem to be the one getting the pats on the back, and in reality, I get those as a result of the men and women that do this job every day. Very proud to work with them. There's a couple of things that I wanted to mention about the types of things that they do. One was in November, you're probably familiar with the gentleman that got on the highway the wrong way, hit a head-on with a semi truck, killed him and one son. Our deputy sheriffs, two of them were there first, saw signs of life of a three-year-old boy, and actually just picked him up in their arms, one groved, the other carried as they get to the hospital, and the medical people have made it clear that this boy would not have survived without that quick action taken. The boy has fully recovered. He and his mother came back here about three weeks ago to visit and meet the deputy sheriffs. The boy spent several weeks in the hospital, but they looked, he looked great, so we're very pleased that that worked out the way it is. We know, or the way it did, we know that that does not always work that way. The other thing I'll mention is that unusual situation that we rarely have in our county. I can't even think of another time that this happened, was the robbery murder that happened just outside of Lebanon there on Oregonia Road. A 17-year-old girl resident had planned and organized a robbery with five other teenage boys. We were to man up there that she had a relationship with to be robbed. They carried a baseball bat, a gun, and mask to be able to pull this off, and as the man with the bat approached him, the other guy happened to be armed and ended up shooting him, killing him in defense of himself, and then got into somewhat of a gunfight with one of the other would-be robbers, and that teenage boy ended up being shot twice, spent weeks at the hospital under our guard, has since been relocated in juvenile detention. So you have five teenagers, the sixth one is dead as a result of it, all facing murder charges, which is just kind of a bizarre situation. And I mentioned that one because it's so unusual and it's a tragic situation, but the kind of work that these men and women do to respond to that, the deputy sheriffs, the crime scene specialists, the interviews that took place, had this investigation wrapped up in just a few days where everybody was incarcerated except for one, and that last one was incarcerated just a few weeks ago. So everybody's facing those charges, waiting for it to progress through the system. So those are the kind of men and women that, and you have them here in your city as well, those first responders and those fire, police, and EMS that do these things every day, and I certainly am just proud to be part of all that. So that being said, if anybody has any questions or comments, I will...
I would just like to make a comment because obviously so aware, a year ago, one of your sheriffs and an EMT saved my granddaughter's life, and if it hadn't been for your sheriff, my granddaughter would not be alive today, and celebrating her second birthday was pretty special. So you don't always hear those wonderful life-saving stories, and obviously personally for myself and my family, how truly appreciative we are for what he did for us. So it's just one of many examples of how important that really is. And as you say, you represent, and you represent our county so exceptionally well. So proud to have you represent us, but as you said, the men and women that are out on the roads each and every day that take care of us, we thank them, and please share that with them as well.
Thank you. You're good.
I believe one of my fellow council members has something to give you and to share with you, and I knew you were going to leave something. Councilmember Schaefer?
Speaking of saving lives and whatnot, Sheriff Sims, thank you for coming and giving us an update. We live in the greatest county of the greatest state in the greatest country, and your contribution of service to our community is much appreciated. I just want to highlight how you go above and beyond the call of duty to protect life as we gear up to vote on an ordinance to help protect human life. I thought it was fitting with you here to stress that all life is worthy of protection, including baby ducks. Last year on a hot summer day, Sheriff Sims jumped into action where he heard the desperate cries of a bunch of baby ducklings stranded in a storm drain. He worked tirelessly in the heat to rescue and reunite those ducklings to their mother. The story was cute, but the story that shined through to me was of the character of the man that we call sheriff, who shows up for service and cares for the least of us. With that, as a thank you for all you do, we're presenting you with a new service weapon to carry concealed in this building, as you wish, as a reminder that all life is a gift.
So Councilmember Schaefer, please make sure he opens it.
All right. All right. I hear the aqua... It's very fitting.
We have our very serious moments, but sometimes not so serious.
That was very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Larry, again, thanks for coming. Feel free to duck out whenever you want.
You've been waiting all day to say that.
Okay. This is probably one of my, not that Sheriff Sims, you're not one of my favorite people to see and talk to, but excited to have these young men here tonight. As those of you that may know, wrestling, I would say is in my blood. I love wrestling. My son was a wrestler, starting at age five, all the way through high school with Lebanon. Wrestling, I would say, one of the best, incredible sports ever. So I've been following you all and seeing all the amazing things that you have done. And when I heard that there were six qualifying wrestlers going to state, I said, we got to make this happen. So I reached out to Michelle and I said, how can we get these young men here with their coach and their families so that we can say to you how very proud we are of you, how you represent your school, how you represent your community? It's not just about winning, even though I know it is. It's building your character, it's the character of you as wrestlers, it's your teamwork, it's embodying all of your whole person. And you know, I know sometimes people are, you know, hear me say, I taught these boys. I knew them when they were eight and nine years old, and look at you now, just so exceptionally proud of each and every one of you. What we want to do is we want to say congratulations for a great season and much success to you as you leave our fine city on, is it Friday?
Yeah.
You leave on Friday. So Coach, come on up here. Coach Hensley. And Coach, we make you know, Coach, that you are, besides their parents, you're such a phenomenal role model for these young men, and they would absolutely say that. So I was able, we were able to do certificates for each and every one of you. So Coach, would you like to say anything?
Sure.
As I could put him on the spot, totally.
How much time do I have? No, I'll be brief. Do I need to talk here?
Yeah, you can talk there.
I will say that it's definitely a special year, these guys. So this program, the way we are now, started about six years ago. As a matter of fact, one of your council members, Mr. Matthews, knows very well about the path we've been on for the last six years, and these guys, as you said, with the character that you develop in athletics, regardless of sport, I'm biased toward wrestling, but they've gone through it. They've learned how to suffer at a young age, and the lessons they've learned through their journey will definitely help them become better fathers, husbands, and contributors to the community, hopefully Lebanon, after they go through their professional endeavors. But I'll say that I'm very proud of them, I'm proud of my staff. It's been, we've made memory after memory, week after week, they fed off each other in a positive way all season, and you know, we, like you said, we have six guys getting ready to qualify, wrestle at the state tournament this weekend. That's enough firepower to get on the state board and look at top 10 in the state, which I know will make Lebanon proud, and we're happy to do so. So with that, I'd say that's my synopsis of the season, if I could be short, and great families, proud and honored to coach here.
Great.
Yeah.
So gentlemen, you got a Rida certificate, we want you to come up and we'll present it to you. How's that? Jeff McCall, come on up.
Yeah.
13 pound. Congratulations. Stand right up here, we'll take some photos. Look, Mark. Now usually when I was at, I was at one thing and I was taking photos, and it was funny because you all, I don't know wrestling persons, like this is a great face, I want to make sure we get them looking all smiling. Even Mark. Time drop. Pay with tagline. Guys, come on up here through the middle here, take a photo. Councilmembers, stand up so you can be behind. Wrong one, yeah. Side.
Mark's good.
All right, everybody's thoughtful. Guys, you look great.
Two, three times they jam. It was like psychotic.
Now, if you, hey Coach, this is an opportunity, you were asking if you, we love Rita State, but obviously you may go at any time if you'd like to. Go. It's totally up to you.
So you want us to stay for a meeting? Thank you.
Yeah, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
I helped, they were like in really narrow streets.
Now, we also have another guest, Mary. Please come on up. And...
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Yes.
We've met on several occasions.
Yes, we've met on several occasions.
And Mark, and Joe, and Adam as well. I'm Mary Lynn Burke. I'm running for judge of the 12th District Court of Appeals, and I just wanted to formally introduce myself to you if you haven't had the chance to meet me. I've been giving out nail files with my website on it, so some of them were thanking me for the nail files. I wanted to let you know that I have local government experience. I have been in the prosecutor's office in Claremont County for 25 years in the Civil Division, and I have represented basically every county elected official, be it the Board of County Commissioners, the sheriff, engineer, water and sewer district, as well as many of the township trustees, in a variety of matters that often come before the 12th District. I have extensive experience in state court, specifically 15 cases in the 12th District Court of Appeals. One of my competitors only has one, another one of my competitors only has four cases in the 12th District Court of Appeals. I think if you're going to run for judge of the court, you should have some experience in that court. I also have interest in that court. This is what I want to do, this is the only thing I want to do. This is not a consolation prize because I didn't get an appointment for something, this is not a stepping stone because I want something else. This is what I want to do. I want you to know that I understand, and I've worked on successfully, culverts, sewers, bridges, roads, slip and fall in the courthouse, employment problems, election matters, all of those things that have to do with the business of government as well as the actual governmental functions, what we would consider traditional governmental functions, in addition to constitutional issues. Mostly, those constitutional issues would be in the federal court in the form of what we call Section 1983 suits. I look forward to answering any questions anyone has. Again, I just came to say hello, and it's been a pleasure to know the city of Lebanon a little bit better. What a fabulous, I have to admit, I've pretty much been eating my way across the 12th District between the pancake breakfasts. Luckily, there's been a few 5Ks, I appreciate those. Your Christmas parade is fabulous, the garden tour, I've been to a few of those and a few of their pre-parties, again, more food. And goodness, what else in Lebanon? There's so many things, but lots of Lebanon.
Well, thank you for spending time in our wonderful city.
Thank you, I enjoy it.
We can get you into CrossFit afterward if you want.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Hi, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me back.
Absolutely.
And esteemed council members, nice to see you again, and giving me the opportunity to introduce myself and my candidacy. My name is Kevin Khan, I'm running for Congress for U.S. House of Representatives, First District, and I'm a 17-year resident of the district. I'm an entrepreneur, I'm a local business owner. My company, K2 Industrial Controls, is a manufacturers representative organization that works with American manufacturers, helping them to export their made-in-the-U.S.A. products. I've served on boards of directors, both of publicly listed companies and nonprofits alike. I've been a road warrior for most of my career, but in my time, when I'm in town, I've devoted time to youth sports. I'm a USA hockey sergeant, coach. I've coached both in the Cincinnati Leagues and the Dayton Leagues. I think one of your color guardsmen was a hockey player that I coached about nine years ago, and I currently serve on the Sycamore High School Board of Ice Hockey, their Ice Hockey Association. I'm running for Congress because I think that at our federal level, our elected officials are failing us. I'm running as a Libertarian, the Libertarian Party, because I believe that a policy of small federal government, fiscal prudence, and letting people live free and to their fullest as long as they're doing no harm to anyone else is the best form of government, and I think it's what our founding fathers envisioned when they debated, framed, and adopted our Constitution. And I'd like to let the voters of Lebanon know that this year, for the first time in about eight years, you have an opportunity to pull Libertarian ballot in the primaries. For my candidacy, I'm focusing on three main issues that I think resonate with the constituents of the First District. And the first is term limits for Congress. American voters overwhelmingly support term limits. During his candidacy for presidency, Mr. Trump promised that he would support term limits, and in a recent poll, 79% of people asked, hope that he keeps this campaign promise, including 91% of the Republicans that were surveyed. 82% would love to see a constitutional amendment for term limits. My opponent in the race, Mr. Steve Chabot, signed a pledge before his previous election stating that he supported term limits, but here we are, two elections later. The obstacle with term limits is that both legacy parties in Washington support big government agendas right now. Some years, there's more welfare than warfare, other years, there's more welfare and also more warfare, but every year, there's a bigger debt. We run federal deficit spending in half or a quarter of a century. We steal the economic opportunity from our kids and future generations. Representatives aren't aligned, their focus isn't aligned with constituencies, they have to please lobbyists who finance their next elections. So we end that by limiting how many next elections they can have. This needs to be done by candidates like me, apart from the duopoly legacy parties who have no interest or buy-in into big government agendas. So I want to be your voice for fiscal conservancy in Washington. It'll benefit our democracy considerably. It'll reduce the importance of lobbyist money in elections, it will make it easier for districts to free themselves of unsatisfactory incumbents. Latest polls say that 17% of people approve of Congress's job, but 90% of incumbents get reelected. So I pledge if I get sent to Washington, I will work on legislation enacting term limits, and I would pledge that I wouldn't serve any more than three terms. The second issue that I'm focusing on is the Second Amendment, and I think this is a good night to be here for that. Our nation was birthed and enshrined in the rights that are protected under our Second Amendment, and I think we know that when Paul Revere rode through the streets of Lexington and Concord screaming, "The British are coming," they were coming to take colonial citizens' gunpowder. The ability to defend oneself is a natural right, both from societal dangers and government tyranny. Both Republicans and Democrats right now are floating flawed plans that will infringe this right. Government earns its power from the people, the people don't ask for liberties and freedom from the government. History around the world has shown that when populations lose their Second Amendment right, it's very easy for governments to come after other rights that are protected by our Bill of Rights. So on this issue, I don't waver. The third issue is immigration, and this one with the son of an immigrant and an immigrant wife in our White House, followed, following our presidency where we had a son of an immigrant, astounds me how much it divides our nation. One of our greatest pillars of strength in this country is the diversity of our community. Another is the American dream, and we need to be able to continue to offer that to the world. It makes us unique, it gives us an aura of... It makes us unique, it gives us an aura of invincibility. The story of America is in itself the story of immigrants, and I'm sure everyone in this room has an immigration story, whether that's themselves, a spouse, adopted children, a parent, grandparent, or like me, eight great-grandparents who came here alone, found each other, built families, raised patriotic Americans who served, started businesses, gave people employment. We need to welcome those who want to commit time, energy, resources to build prosperous communities. Immigrants are our employers, they're skilled laborers, they're our service workers and our consumers, they build our economy and they donate to charity. And we need to find a way to enable a free and fair system so that anyone who has the hunger to come and help build our communities, knowing that each individual has a natural right and expectation to be treated humanely and with dignity, has the opportunity to do that. So with that, thank you for the time. If you would like to learn more about my campaign, it can be found at conlikethehotdog, con, the number four, congress.com, and I have a very active Facebook page, also con for Congress, and I will be here through the meeting if anybody wants to ask me anything after, I'm happy to meet with you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir, very much. All right, we are going to go ahead and move on to regular items, starting with previous business. Number one, ordinance number 2020-022.
Ordinance number 2020-022 is an ordinance permitting concealed carry in the city building located at 50 South Broadway, Lebanon, Ohio, during times when Lebanon, Ohio Municipal Court is not in operation.
Mr. Brunka.
This legislation will authorize concealed carry firearm permit holders to carry a firearm in the city building when municipal court is not in session.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mr. Schope?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schope?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right, discussion item, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of city council is a work session meeting on Monday, March 16th, and that's all I have.
All right, no executive session.
That's correct, Your Honor.
All right. Councilor Schump, do you have any items tonight?
No, thank you.
Good. Councilmember Schaefer?
No, I'll pass, thank you.
And thank you for the Sheriff Sims, that was great, creative, love it, thank you. Great idea.
He's a great, great guy.
Yes.
And proud that I can call him Sheriff.
Yeah, absolutely. Vice Mayor Messer?
I have nothing, thanks.
Councilmember Matthews?
Early voting is going on, so if those are that interested in the primary, please take advantage of that, especially if you or those around you may have any illness or risk of illness, and please pay attention to all the information that's out there for the primary.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Monroe?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Just to let all the council members know, as I said, I brought in the wrestlers, if anyone ever has ideas of someone to bring in, whether it be a group, whether it be an individual, do not hesitate to do that. That's one of the really neat things about our meetings. So any ideas that you have are great ideas, it'd be nice to be able to just recognize groups and individuals within the community that do things to make our community an even better place to live.
And they're everywhere.
And they are everywhere, absolutely. So, that's all I have this evening, so I will entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Shope?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
And thank you for joining our meeting Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. Look forward to seeing you all at our next scheduled meeting. Have a great evening.
Thank you.